Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus.
Here.
Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Lynn.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Torti.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Lynn.
A move to we excuse Commissioner Bauer.
Support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Please stand and join us in the fledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a little housekeeping, if you have a cell phone and if you would like to put it on vibrate or turn it off, we would appreciate it. Thank you. First order of business is the retirement recognition of Lynn Schomburger.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm very pleased to be able to speak and recognize Lynn Schomburger for her years of service to the city of Sioux St. Marie. She is currently planning to retire as of December 31st, and if we could please have Lynn come up here and join us, as well as Chief Riley. Going through the information that we had on record, we were able to come up with an impressive list of Lynn's accomplishments. Throughout her tenure with the city, she has served on the Post-Employment Health Plan Board for police officers and records, and also served on the Special Healthcare Determining Committee and Decisions to Actions, which was an educational program addressing youth issues within the community. She was hired on July 29th, 1985 into the Parking Department and then transferred into the Police Department as an Executive Secretary on September 2nd, 2010. In total, Lynn has served the city and its citizens for over 31 years. During my tenure, I can certainly attest that Lynn is insightful, honest, hardworking, fair, and committed to the community. She is well-regarded, and it has been a pleasure to work with her. We also have a letter here that's been signed by City Administration and City Commission, which I'll read, after which the Chief will make some remarks. Dear Lynn, congratulations and thank you for your years of service with the city of Sioux St. Marie. We realize that our employees are our greatest asset, and we are delighted to honor your dedicated service and commitment to the city of Sioux St. Marie. It is our employees who uphold our mission, demonstrate our vision of working for a better future for our community, and make us the passionate organization we are today. The success of our organization is a direct result of your efforts and dedication. Your commitment to personal and professional integrity is the differentiating factor that sets us apart from other communities. As you reach this milestone in your career and set your sights on future goals, please take a moment to reflect upon your accomplishments, and take pride in knowing that you were an important member of our team. Please accept our heartfelt thanks and good wishes on your future endeavors. And this is signed by the Mayor and City Commission, as well as City Administration. And at this point, I'll turn this over to Chief Riley for remarks.
Thank you.
Lynn does not like attention. She's one of those that, let's get it over with, and so she can go sit down, or head out the door. I will say that my very first day here, I walked to the front counter at the old station, and Chrissy and Lynn were behind the counter, and I believe it was Lynn that asked me, "Can I help you?" I said, "I'm John Riley, I'm the new chief here." And Lynn got up so fast and went over the door, opened the door, and let me in, show me where my office is. Now, I walk into the lobby at the station, and I look at Lynn, hit the buzzer to let me in, she goes, "You know the code." But I can honestly say, I would not have made it so quickly, so far, in six years, without your help. You, as well as the senior officers, helped me get this far, and guided me through the process. So, without you, I wouldn't be...
The officers are...
Thank you for all your help and friendship.
I'm masturbating morning complaints with you.
That just means a job well done.
Are we well protected tonight?
Yeah. Thank you again, Lynn, and we certainly wish you well, and whatever you intend you want to do. Thanks again. Thanks. Thanks, officers.
They should stay for the meeting. It's not that long.
As I said, no problem.
What's your plate number? Okay. Item number two, public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, hearing done, we'll go to item number three, the consent agenda. Deputy City Manager.
Under the consent agenda, A, minute approval. One, approval of the minutes of the regular City Commission meeting of December 5th, 2016. Recommended action, approve the minutes of the regular City Commission meeting of December 5th, 2016. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. A, Airport Advisory Board of November 10th. B, Economic Development Corporation of November 8th. C, Police Fire Pension Board of October 26th. D, Police Fire Pension Board of November 2nd. And E, Sioux St. Marie Housing Commission of October 20th. Recommended action, accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. Item B, appointments and resignations. One, reappointment to the Airport Advisory Board. Recommended action, reappoint Ms. Terri Wolski, Mr. Jerry Jones, Mr. Fred Smith, and Mr. James Cloudman to the Airport Advisory Board for terms to expire on January 1, 2021. Item two, reappointment of Kelly Freeman to the EUP Regional Planning and Development Commission Governing Board. Recommended action, reappoint Kelly Freeman to the EUP Regional Planning and Development Commission Governing Board for a term to expire on January 31st, 2020. Item three, designation of Kelly Freeman, Community Development Director, as the city of Sioux St. Marie representative on the EUP Regional Trails Consortium. Recommended action, designate Kelly Freeman as the city's representative on the EUP Regional Trails Consortium, and authorize the submission of the included contact sheet to that effect. Item C, City Managers' Report. One, designation of authorized signers for the transaction involving 801 Seymour Street. Recommended action, appoint City Attorney Canelo and City Manager Turner to act as the signers at the closing on 801 Seymour Street.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lynn, you had a comment.
Us buying the property owned by Central Savings Banks and some on the bank board, I don't think I should be able to vote on that. I should abstain, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we could pull that off the agenda?
Item C1, we will pull off the consent agenda, and that'll be our first item of business, and everything else is as is. Is there anyone that has a question on any of the other consent agenda items? Commissioner Torti.
I saw a move that we approved the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Yes.
Commissioner Torti.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. So, our first item under that same, I guess the agenda, would be the City Managers' Report, item C1, which is the designation of authorized signers for the transaction involving 801 Seymour Street, and the recommendation, as you can see from the City Manager, and Commissioner Lynn will not speak to that. Is there any questions on that item? Okay, Commissioner Osterhaus.
I saw a move that we support recommend action of appointing City Attorney Canelo and City Manager Turner to act as signers at his closing on 801 Seymour Street.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any comments? Questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Yes.
Commissioner Torti.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Item four, special orders of business. A, public hearing for and consideration of Bambi Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Amendment.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, EDC Executive Director Holt is planning to present to the City Commission.
Evening, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Thanks for having me. As you have heard, this is the ask for approval for the consideration of the Bambi Hotel, former Bambi Hotel, Brownfield Redevelopment Amendment. This has had quite a history. It started in 2009, and it's changed hands, and under new ownership, and they have demolished the building, which was a needed project, that's for sure. And the new building is currently being constructed, and this allows us to reimburse part of the increased tax value as a brownfield, not to exceed in the amount of $75,000. The schedule is in your, I believe, in your packet, and it'll stretch through to 2023, I believe. No, the schedule's in the packet. I've can't find the date of the expiration of this, but...
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The plan itself has a term of 15 years, and so that would run from 2016 until 20, approximately 2031. The schedules within the packet do show that the plan shows estimates for 2036, but it is a 15-year plan, which would be in keeping with the plan that was adopted in 2009 as well.
And that property has changed hands, and now the developer is...
Yeah, the original brownfield was sold, the building was actually purchased by a construction firm out of Marquette Moil Construction. And a few years ago, Otto Investments purchased the property from Moil, and they transferred the rights for the brownfield to Otto Development.
Okay. And we know that's going to be a dollar store?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then whatever we do now, we'll allow them to recapture some of their...
Correct. Correct.
Any questions of Jeff? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. City Manager, any additional information?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there's just a quick bit of information. As Director Holt noted, this is an amendment to a plan that was previously adopted. Following the adoption of the plan, there would be executed an agreement between the EDC, which functions as the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and the developer, which would have certain terms and provisions that would fulfill the obligations and the resolution. And throughout the process, just would like to thank Director Holt and Specialist Leighton for going through the process and going through the brownfield files. Certainly, there's been a swell in institutional knowledge about brownfields within the city and EDC through the project.
Okay. Great. At this time, we hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments and testimony concerning the proposed adoption of an amendment to the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan for the Bambi Property Redevelopment Project. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. City Commission. Commissioner Gary.
I'd make a motion to adopt the included resolution regarding the amendment of this Brownfield Redevelopment Plan in concurrence with recommendation made by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the Bambi Property Redevelopment Project located on the described premises and as detailed within the proposed amended plan.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Just that it would be nice, it would be very nice to have some additional retail. I understand they're moving from one site to the other, but with a brand-new store, more toward the center of the downtown, so hopefully pulls some of that traffic toward the center, or at least to the downtown area. Always a good thing, so with that, it's a good build. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Yes.
Commissioner Torti.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Item number five is the City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A under City Managers' Report would provide for the adoption of a resolution of support to formally become engaged in the MEDC Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. As outlined within the memorandum, City Administration has been initially engaged in the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's Redevelopment Ready Communities process for roughly the last 18 months. The RRC program is currently a voluntary program administered by the MEDC, which offers technical assistance to communities to help streamline development processes. It covers a number of areas, such as the master plan, zoning ordinance downtown, public participation, board member trainings, and internal processes. The intent of the program is to provide a measure of predictability in the development process, so that investors know what to expect and are more likely to make key investments. As Commissioners are aware, the MEDC has recently indicated that in order to be eligible for MEDC community incentive block grants in the future, communities must be engaged in the RRC process by October 1st, 2017. The MEDC defines engagement as passing a resolution of support and intention to participate in the program, completing a self-evaluation created by the MEDC, and attending related training sessions. The city has internally completed the self-evaluation and would submit that alongside the included resolution, should it be adopted by the City Commission. Concurrently, the city is on track to have completed necessary RRC trainings well in advance of the established October 1st, 2017 deadline. The program itself would logically complement the work that is being accomplished by the local Economic Resources Alliance, and the partners which comprise the ERA, which include the city, Downtown Development Authority, the EDC, Chippewa County EDC, Chippewa County Health Department, the Sioux Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, Small Business Development Corporation, the Chamber, Eastern Upper Peninsula Planning, USDA, SMART, and the Sioux Tribe. Moreover, the program is in line with various City Commission established goals pertaining to economic development. In addition to technical assistance, the MEDC through the RRC program would be willing to advertise priority development sites to a broad audience through program participation with the ambition that parcels will be more expeditiously turned around. With the old Mariner Motel Lot, the Claremont Trucking Property, and the old mental health building all being high priorities for redevelopment, it would be City Administration's intention to submit these properties for inclusion in the MEDC's latest available property publication. Based upon a recent meeting with MEDC representatives, it is evident that the city of Sioux St. Marie is strongly positioned to perform to a high standard in the RRC program, and that it maintains an appropriate vision for future development that would maximize the value obtained from participation in the program. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the City Commission adopt the included resolution of support to formally become engaged in the MEDC Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, and affirm the City Commission's support for participation in the same. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Torti.
I move that the City Commission adopt the included resolution of support to formally become engaged in the MEDC Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, and affirm the City Commission's support for participation within the RRC program.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. We know there's a lot of acronyms in that message. But we also know that it's a good message, because it really provides, hopefully, additional wealth for the community going forward as it becomes developable. So, I think Commissioner Gage, you had your hand up.
Yep, I just want to commend our EDC Director, Jeff Holt, who was in the audience, for all the great work he's done on this, and for the rest of the Commissioners. I know a lot of you are involved with the ERA. I think this is going to be a transformative thing for our community, and so this is a very easy vote, and it's great to see this coming across our desk.
Commissioner Torti.
Thank you. Yeah, I have to ditto his comments, but I only have, I do have one question. So, I know that right now, part of the Commission, I think it's Commissioner Gary, are involved in the form-based zoning that, no?
Commissioners, Osterhaus.
Commissioner Osterhaus, okay. Is on, okay, is on that board. And I'm concerned, though, if any of these, if any developers come to us before the form-based zoning is completed, is that going to affect the type of building that can happen? Or do we really need to make sure that that form-based zoning is done first?
City Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Torti. Just as an update on the Form-Based Code Committee, the participants of the committee have been identified, and we're looking at January for our kickoff meeting. I would expect that because the RRC program supports and endorses the use of form-based codes, that the program would be possibly providing support as the city goes through that process. But if a developer comes prior to a form-based code being put into place, we would work with them as quickly and as professionally as we do now. I think that the RRC program itself, it recognizes that communities can enter in and still require a bit of time to put programs like form-based code committees and form-based code ordinances into place. So, it's a flexible program. It definitely provides support, and it could provide technical assistance for the city to accomplish that goal, and certainly, I don't think we'd be at any detriment to enter now in advance of the committee doing its work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Excellent question. Anyone else have any comments or questions? We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Yes.
Commissioner Torti.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item B, under the City Managers' Report, would provide for the declaration of surplus and authorization for staff to place onto the city website and pinpoint prospective buyers for five city-owned parcels generally located on the west side of Riverside Drive, just north of Gardenville Road. On this matter, Community Development Director Freeman is presenting to the City Commission.
Evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, before you tonight are five parcels that were actually created by the city through the land division process back in 2004, one of which was sold. You can see there's a house on it. The remaining five still are under our ownership. So, as part of the goal identified earlier this year for divesting ourselves of excess properties, these seem like a nice initial group to kick us off. We've actually got quite a number that City Manager Turner and I have identified through various meetings throughout this year. So, what we're asking for is to declare these properties surplus, of course, minus the lift station, which you see in the image, and allow us to utilize necessary means to move these on to new owners and taxpayers.
Okay, just a comment, and I know that the Commission, one of the goals that we've had last year and this year, I believe it was last year also, that was to put back on the tax rolls as many properties that the city owns as possible that would be, would add to the tax base. And those parcels that we're looking at, they've been there for a while, and the one, or at least two or three of them, that, and we haven't been marketing them, as I would understand it, but I think the Commission, some Commissioners were here when we talked about that, and there were some DEQ, some water issues.
I'm sure there are some wetlands back here, but...
But they, now, with our new policy on property disposal and that stuff, I'm not sure what the property went for that the gentleman did end up building his home?
This one went for $22,000.
Okay.
I don't expect that we'll get that for the other pieces, based on wetlands.
That's one of the reasons I think why they sat there, because of the amount of work to clear the permit property. The permit would be a problem, so, good. No, our hope would be to put as many properties on a list serve that we would develop, so that anybody looking at our website would know what properties are available?
Yeah, well, we haven't figured out exactly the mechanism that we're going to use yet, but we'll do whatever we can to put these things out there in front of people.
And these are the first five?
First five of this stack.
Okay.
So...
Are those all the properties?
More than likely, yes.
Okay. Excellent. Questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Gage.
So, I had a long phone call with Oliver about this, and I'm just wondering if he can run us through the process of how we came to these five, and how we identified those other 15.
How do you prioritize, I guess, the...
Well, basically, we just kind of ran through and figured out whatever was the easiest to market in terms of, you know, a lot of what we have is not accessible, or is small, or is really only useful to a joining owner. We kind of went through over the course of several meetings and determined what would probably be the easiest, ignoring the wetland issues, of course, but what was most buildable, and we're taking those through first.
And those are residential?
Correct. They're actually zoned multifamily, so it is conceivable that somebody could come along and buy one, two, and three, and then put apartments on it.
Excellent. And that's a good point, too, when we're talking publicly about it, that what is the zoning, so they're multiple family, or...
Multiple family. It's RM1. I did the math on, if somebody bought parcels one, two, and three, they could conceivably put 62, two-bedroom units on it, if they could find a place for parking.
Good to know.
That's always the control.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions?
Given that we've got goal setting coming up, I'm fine selling these parcels and putting them on the market, I have no problem with that. But given that we've got goal setting coming up, may it be a better time for us to prioritize which parcels we do want to put up on market, and have a better, more thorough conversation about these parcels?
Other than the fact that the administration deals with them more than we would?
Yeah.
So, if they would maybe, you'd have a chance to prioritize them before we look at them, but I don't know that I want to get into actually ranking them versus letting them have a flexibility?
Okay. Part of the rationale behind bringing them a little bit at a time was so we weren't slamming the Commission with everything at once.
Sure. Okay. A thought. Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Lynn.
Your Honor, I saw a move of City Mission to clarify the presented parcels as surplus and authorize City Administration to market these properties on the city website, utilize appropriate means to locate interested parties.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Yes.
Commissioner Torti.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
No.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
That concludes the City Manager's Report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item number six is a status report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A on a status report pertains to the light at the Sioux event. Just as a reminder, this kicked off on December 16th, and it runs through the end of the month, with the exception of Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. From 210 feet in the air, people will be able to see lights across the community. The charge for admission is $4 for adults, $2 for children between 6 and 18 years old, and children 5 and under are free, with families being able to be admitted for $10. Certainly, this is the fourth year that this is going on, it's grown every year. And there are also forums that people can go to, siusaintmarie.com, to register for prizes, and the winners will be drawn at random at the end of the event on January 6th.
And where do the winners win?
There are various prizes, I believe, that there are certificates.
Get certificates?
Correct.
Okay.
And just as an addendum, there are also outdoor ice rinks that are being set up, just as last year. There will be three rinks set up across the community in conjunction with Sioux Housing, Lake Superior State University, and Sioux Michigan Hockey Association. And these are the three rinks that were set up at the Nora Center, as well as on Anderey Avenue with the Sioux Housing, and downtown. So, we'll be seeing those come up early January. And as last bit of update on winter activities, we're expecting that the Ski Hill will open at 3:00 on Wednesday.
Tubing Hill.
3:00 in the afternoon, yes. I'm sorry, the Tubing Hill, yes.
Tubing Hill and the Ski Hill. Wednesday at what time?
Minneapolis Woods. 3:00.
Oh, Sioux Seal Recreation, right? Okay. And, oh, the one, the ice rink downtown is in the Maloney Alley area?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay.